Welcome to the Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, September tenth, twenty twenty four. Uh, call to order. We are land acknowledgement. We would like to begin this meeting by acknowledging that we are gathered on the traditional ancestral and unceded territories of the Inca Cabla and Sylph people. Adoption of minutes, two point one, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, June eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Recommendation that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting held on June eighteenth, twenty twenty four be adopted. Counselor, Counselor Petros, any errors or omissions? All those in favor? Oh? Question? Yes.
Maybe you can, you can adopt it. I just have a question afterwards.
Before we do that, go ahead.
I was just looking at five point one new business housing. And as it was three months ago already, uh, it says that B C Housing presented the housing continuum that is available in the city of Merritt, highlighting the projects and levels of support that are being provided in various buildings. And I don't recall those sites. Can anybody remind me?
See you.
Is it just the Ask Wellness?
Um, so there are the two, the ask ones that are managed by Ask Wellness. There's uh, people at Olympic Villas. There are people at um Nicola Meadows. Um, and I feel like there might have been a yeah, Juniper House.
Trade Winds?
Trade Winds, thank you, yes.
Yeah.
So there are various sites across the city that are, there are people living in them that are receiving some sort of subsidy from B C Housing.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you for the question. Three general matters, delegations and recognitions, no unfinished business, nothing, new business, nothing, five point one permissive tax exemption. Um, I probably will not read the recommendation at this point. I think we'll just go ahead and do what we need to do, and then I'll read it at the end. Cheer show.
Thank you. I am going to uh invite Linda Robinson, our, our, she's sitting in the door, our manager of finance and human resources. She's going to present you the briefing note. And then the director of finance and I may have some comments to make before um we get into the full on presentation.
Here you go.
Okay. So um, we've had we've had twenty seven applicants this year, uh forty roll numbers. Um, and our, the value of assessments since the twenty twenty one exemption has really significantly increased. A lot of properties have actually doubled. Um, in twenty twenty one, the permissive exemptions that were granted were roughly around ninety thousand dollars. For twenty twenty five, if it is a hundred percent of the exemptions, we're at a hundred and fifty two thousand. Um, just a number of things that I'd like you to know is a lot of municipalities are scaling back tax exemptions. Um, Smithers no longer offers them at all. A lot of the Metro Vancouver municipalities have really scaled back. Some of them are going as low as uh zero point three four percent. And one of the highest ones um is set at point nine one percent. If we passed everything, we'd be at approximately one point five percent of our um of our, of our budgeted tax revenue. So there's a lot, there is a lot to, to look at. Um, you have a lot of options available to you. Try to break it out on all of the title pages, so you can grant it at a percentage, a hundred seventy five, fifty, or whatever you choose. And um you can also grant it on the property, the building, or both. Um, we have eight new applicants from last year. Uh, the Nicola Valley Food Bank Society has brought forth two properties. And the Conyette Friendship Center has um brought forth six new low income housing.
Your mic is on?
Yes.
Yes. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, no worries. It's a, it's about the information that you are providing. So there are municipalities that have made some changes so that they are dealing differently with this tax exemption. When you mentioned uh those two places, are we talking about uh the tax exemptions removed for places of worship as well as non-for-profits or one or the other?
Um, I believe it is for all of them. We're mandated to do the, there's some that we're mandated to do. Um.
See you. So, or everyone wants to jump in?
So with regards to places of worship, there is a provincial portion, and then there's a municipal portion. So we have to, they, they get the provincial portion, but you do not in fact have to give them any municipal exemption. Every, like, they get fifty percent basically as a provincial subs- uh the exemption, thank you. Um, but we do not have to give them anything, and we've always given them a hundred percent.
The statutory exemption applies to the actual place of worship. It does not apply to things like parking lots, daycare centers, land and gardens around the place of worship. So we have zero control over the statutory portion. They will automatically get that. What will be in front of you tonight is the permissive portion where you're considering areas around the place of worship. And that's what municipalities have discretion.
Linda, your backup? You don't have to turn your mic off, by the way.
Okay. Okay, I think um I think that pretty much sums it up for me. Um, I've broken it out into uh each property.
Yes. Yes.
So I just, uh, we wanted to preface this a little bit. Uh, the CFO and I and, and the manager wanted to be clear about why this process is different than perhaps it's been in the past. Um, council recently updated the policy, the permissive tax exemption policy. Um, we're going from four years to three years because we wanted a shorter timeframe, uh depending on how things are going. Um, we're seeing as, as the, the manager of the services said, the property values or assessment values are doubling in some cases, right? So if the longer you sit on that, the more we're giving people as these things increase. Um, so that's why we've gone to three years. You can also review it yearly. We are presenting to you a number of options because council is aware that we do have financial challenges um in regards to putting money in the bank for larger capital projects. And in order to get into a position where we can start bringing uh our annual tax increases down to a more manageable level for people, we have to be conscious of where we're giving money. Um, specifically in the new policy, orga- organizations are meant to only apply for one of three potential sources of support, either permissive tax exemption, some of them have a line item in the budget and or grant and aid. So some of the organizations that have been getting all three, plus they also get potentially a free business license, which is a hundred dollars, but it's still you know, it's every dollar counts in this situation. Uh, we want to make sure that counsel is making the most informed choice because as uh Linda said, ultimately one and a half percent, this hundred and fifty thousand dollars represents approximately one and a half percent of our tax revenue. So all of our community members are subsidizing these events. These things will happen, and some of them are very important to our community. Uh, you know, they provide excellent services that we as an organization probably would not be able to provide, either financially or with the staff resources that we have. So they're important to support, but uh, community organizations can't necessarily rely on a municipal government to be a major funder. That is why we're asking, you know, when we get to the, to the grants and aid section um in the fall, why we're asking them to gen- gen- genuinely tell us how else they're fundraising. We will often get things like we're gonna do a bingo, but there's no when will you do this bingo? How much do you expect to get from this bingo? So we're actually trying to make people more accountable to the financial support that the city is giving them. Um, I think the CFO, did you have a couple of other things? Okay, great.
Well, I think what we have to do is last year, we asked the citizens to take quite a hit. And we sold that, and I think we've been very diligent with the funds that have come in. So now we come to this portion where now it's time for somebody else to fall into the line of the same that we asked the citizens to take last year. So I understand this is, you know, per- permissive tax exemptions are, are nice to have, but we're at a situation now where we cannot be as generous as we have been. So who, I, I think we all understand the fact that we're moving into uh the situation where we can make this work for everyone. Uh, but everybody, like the citizens last year, um took quite the hit. So I think it's just rare that we move on to the next se- section.
And it's super extremely challenging for us to, to identify. You know, we're going into uh senior leadership budget discussions tomorrow to start. And we are struggling with identifying additional areas where we can cut from the operational parts of our budgets. Uh, that ultimately means their council will have some very difficult discussions and decisions to make as we potentially bring in scenarios around service cuts. So if you think about one point five percent, this is essentially uh at least one fully burdened staff member uh that we could have or we may have to cut from the budget, right? Like that's how we should be thinking about the value of this one point this uh one point five percent tax revenue.
Counselor.
C A O, can you please go over the existing requirements for these applications, specifically talking about financial statements? When I review these appli- applications, the financial statements vary from very basic, not even in-house financials to audited financials. There is a wide, you know, variety of um financials. So according to our existing requirements, I want you to go over what are we asking from them to present to, to the city?
Ultimately, we always want to see audited financials, but as we've had discussions in the past, it's challenging for some not-for-profits to be able to present those. So we are looking for at minimum, uh, you know, signed by director, two directors kind of financial statements. Again, that still challenges some organizations. So we have spent, the Linda has spent time trying to make sure that the financials that we have are appropriate. So a lot of extra time has gone into contacting organizations. Some organizations did not submit financials or were not in compliance with the bylaw or the policy in other ways. And the department staff have had to try and follow up with those people. So you're right, you will see different types of financials. Some of them just aren't able to produce anything different. But as we move forward with this process, if council continues to provide permissive tax, we will have to require more and more because we are becoming, we are required to be more and more accountable at this point.
Everybody?
Yep. So, and I just want to um mention that while reviewing these financials, you can see that some organizations have healthy numbers. And other organizations are going through a financial hardship. So um i- one of those requirements, it is a financial need perhaps that they are coming to us because they cannot operate. That could be also um a good requirement. I understand what they are bringing to the, to the community. I recognize all the services provided by these organizations, but also I think that we have to understand where, where their financial po- position is so that we can do an informative decision.
Thank you. See you.
I think it's also important for you to consider some of these are coming as undeveloped properties or properties that are under development. So they're currently only assessed for the land value. And significant developments are, are planned and are currently happening on those that will be done before the end of this bylaw. At that point, you will then be granting them permissive, as a part of the bylaw, they will just get a permissive tax exempt for sure, the whole amount. So you know, we could go from a thousand dollars assessed value from land to ten thousand dollars assessed value with the development on it, with the improvements on it. And you're, if you give them a hundred percent tax exemption now, that carries through no matter what. So you have to be cautious of that. If it's, you know, this is where uh Linda was saying specifically, you can say they can have the permissive tax exemption on the land assessed value. The building assessed va- or the improvement assessed value or both. So definitely consider, you know, some of these properties are, we're seeing large developments that are going to have the large assessments, and we're going to end up granting that ex- that exemption for that developed property within the bylaw period.
Counselor Egan?
Yeah, I just wanted to know whether or not um any of those kinds of properties, some of the ones that are uh that couldn't uh provide us with enough financial information or the ones that are having, you know, just property and then proposed development property, where they give me the opportunity to become and be available for any questions that we might have tonight.
No. So what happens as a part of the process is that we gather the information um according to the policy, and then if there are further questions for anyone, then we would invite them to committee to discuss. Or to the council meeting where a final decision is made. Because you still have to do the bylaw readings um in council, and you will have to do two bylaw readings, then you'll have a break, and then you'll do the third bylaw reading. So there is subsequent opportunities for you to invite a specific organization or specific organizations to come in and speak.
Thank you. So who's gonna walk us through as we move along here?
All right. Okay. And I, I would like to also add that there are municipalities that if there is building going on or construction on the land, they deny the exemption totally as well. Um, first one on our list is um Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saint Saints.
So Linda, just as we, as we move in on this, just so we can understand, and maybe people who are watching can understand, um I, I see we've got like the per- permissive tax exemption options. We have hundred percent, seventy five percent, fifty percent, twenty five percent. Uh, so we know that they get the full provincial part.
Yes.
And right now they're getting a one hundred percent from the city at this point, are they not?
They are.
Okay, thank you. And that's where we're going to start out with every single one of these. Everybody's getting a hundred percent at this point. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Linda to do is sort of summarize each cover page with the assessed value, the total revenue and the um statutory exemption as well as what some of those numbers in the different percentage lines look like. Um, and the CFO will be updating the spreadsheet um a little bit as we go, so you can see what kind of running tally you have on what amounts of permissive tax you're going to get. And they're going to, I, I believe they're, they're going to be broken up into schedules, so you'll see all places of worship. And then um other types of uh per- of properties that fall under the, under the policy.
Okay, so um Church of Latter Day Saints um provided the, the income statement, but not a balance sheet. And I did reach out to them. And there was a, a few churches that said it was difficult to have a balance sheet because the properties aren't actually owned by that specific church. It's owned by the organization. So it was, it was a little difficult. Um, they, they do get the B C statutory exemption of four thousand five sixty two assessed value, uh three million five oh nine seven hundred. At one hundred percent, two ninety seventy.
So just maybe someone can help me out here because I used to be a member of that church. Now, I know when they bought that, they bought all that surrounding land as well. And tr- and we've been exempting that surrounding land as well, have we not?
No.
So your worship, there is a portion of the property that is currently fully taxable, and we have not included that portion as part of this consideration. So there is an amount that gets paid annually.
Okay, that's what I wanted to do. Thank you very much.
So this two ninety seventy is in addition to what other land that we are taxing them on? Okay.
Well, for myself, being the kind of guy I am, I'm going to say fifty percent, and we'll see what anybody else has to say. Counselor, turn.
Um, I, I'll go with fifty percent. Um, I know that there are only twelve um members, active members in this church. Uh, so, so it is struggling. Um.
But I, I agree, but there's eighty million world.
Yeah, I was just, I was, I was getting there, right? So, but it, it's not just a small uh church in Merritt, it's a global church. So um yeah, I, I think that maybe we should reduce it down to fifty or twenty five percent.
Thank you. Counselor Egan?
I would be more um comfortable with seventy, seventy two dollars, like twenty five percent, because it doesn't really say what their income is, and it's pretty hard to give a discount when, I mean, they could have a lot more money in the bank than we know.
I think just the fact that the total revenue for twenty twenty three was five point five million for this property.
Yep. So.
That's right. So this, this, for this local organization.
This fifty five.
Five, five thousand five.
Gonna say zero, that's fine, a million.
So it's only, it's only, uh, it's only eight billion worldwide. Um, Counselor.
So these are places of worship. So I feel that that financial statement, it's not for a whole year, right? It can be for a whole year. So I'm thinking about it may be a partial one for specific month or a few months. So um I, I saw the, the rest, but when I would like to treat them as, as, as such places or worship, and if we were providing a hundred percent in the past, I feel like we should uh start with seventy five percent with uh, with most of these organizations, because uh there are some, there are at least three churches that um twenty five, fifty percent is not going to make an impact, so they are counting with this exemption. So uh I would be more inclined for the seventy five percent for this place.
Excuse me, Counselor Olgin, um a hundred percent of what they've had, it's only three hundred dollars. Two hundred and ninety dollars.
Still, I would go for seventy five percent.
I disagree.
That's what you're allowed to do. Uh, Counselor Ed, it looks like you're reading for your button, no? No, okay. Okay, so we're like, I feel like I'm at an auction barn here. We've got twenty five, fifteen, seventy five. I don't hear.
Could I recommend that we go through Schedule A properties um first? And the director can give us sort of a summary of, of the totals if you go pick. You, you may want to consider all of the properties in a schedule as the same percentage perhaps. Um, so you know, we could summarize there what each of those percentages looks like total wise, right?
Yeah, there's no sense beating the same, well, there's no sense beating the same horse to death. We're gonna do it for one, we're gonna do it for one, right?
That's it.
So here we sit, uh, we sit at twenty five, fifty and seventy five.
Do you, do you want to actively discuss which other churches, maybe even just the, the, Linda could just list them for people? To our viewers at home?
Counselor Ed, you have a question?
I kind of
Hold on a second, Counselor Ed.
Um, I just wanted to say that going from having a hundred percent right to say fifty might be a shock. I agree with all the statements that I've heard. I see where Counselor Attorney is saying, hey, right in the middle, fifty percent seems reasonable. But I also agree with Counselor Ogan in the sense that you've gone from a hundred down to seventy five, because some, the hundred dollars, two hundred dollars isn't a lot of other budget, and some are in uh deficits for the year. So and this first church, their annual budget isn't a lot because they don't have that many members. So yeah. Maybe the seventy five.
But let's, let's remember that this is for three years, correct? This isn't something you do every year. So, I mean, I kind of like what uh, uh, Counselor Ogan says, like seventy five, then we could maybe drop it to fifty, see how that works. But we can't do that right now. This is a three-year situation.
I don't know, can we grade the Bible? No, so it's gotta be across.
Yeah, it's gotta be across the board. We know it's for three years, so that's another thing we have to take and consider.
So the most that any of these churches pays, Mr. Mayor, uh, at a hundred percent is six hundred and twenty seven dollars and fifty eight cents.
Well, I'm going to, uh, I'm going to jump on board with Counselor Ogan and go to seventy five percent. I think that's less of a shock, and I think it just goes to show that um, we, we have to make a change, but we're willing to still shoulder three quarters of it, but um that might for this three years, next, after three years, it might be something different. I mean, that's just me. Uh, but I'm going to go with seventy five along with Counselor Ogan.
And then, Mr. Mayor, at the, as we go through these, we can come to the end and show you what these changes sum, the total summation of them, and then you can decide if you need to go back and
Yep.
make any amendments to before you bring the motion forward.
So now, now's the time to uh put your voice forward, Counselor Petros.
Um, fifty percent. Um, I, I think the churches um see that they need to tighten their belts too, just like everybody in the community. So I'm I'm in agreement with fifty percent.
Okay. Counselor Turney?
Um, I, I think the fifty percent, um, as you say, we've hit the taxpayers with twenty five percent. Um, so I, I think that um a fifty percent, in my opinion, would be uh an appropriate amount.
Okay. So let's do it this way, uh, and call the question. Call the question at seventy five percent. Do I get a seat mover? Counsel Rogan, I'll second. Uh, now we've talked about it, so all those in favor? Opposed? Defeated? New motion? Anybody has one? Counsel attorney?
I'll go at fifty percent of the permissive tax exemption for all churches.
We are at fifty percent. It's still feel like an auctioneer. So uh, does Counsel attorney have a second here? Counselor Baxter, second. Any questions on the fifty? Counsel Rogan, your mic is on? All those in favor at fifty? Opposed? Defeated? Anybody got a new motion?
Places of worship should be twenty five percent. Okay, I don't think they have to pay, you said that six hundred and some odd dollars was the most any one church would have to pay. I think they can afford it. I'm sorry, so that's my motion.
Twenty five, uh, do I have a second here for Counsel Egan? Counsel attorney? Any other questions or anything on there? At twenty five percent, all those in favor? Opposed?
Geez.
Okay, so uh, may I suggest?
Here, one, none of these are like actual supporting motions. You guys are setting a standard. That's okay. So.
Oh, you mean we can just talk about it and say here's what we're gonna do?
Well, except some point, you guys have to come to a consensus.
Okay, so let's do it that way then, rather than.
So, so what I saw was that essentially it was very evenly split. So if I may be so bold as to say, if you take Counsel Egan's twenty five, of which three people voted in favor, and you take Counsel Ogan's seventy five, of which three people voted in favor, and
We end up at fifty percent.
Fifty. Which three people voted in favor? Perhaps you might want to think about fifty percent. You see where it falls, right? If it's, if you're comfortable with it, then.
Oh, sure, let's do it. I mean, we can always make changes. I mean, it's not set in stone.
Exactly. Fifty percent to start.
Fifty percent to start.
Churches. Schedule A, only Schedule A.
Well, you know, i- it's not as complicated. It's just that i- it's, it's just that but here's the thing, i- i- it's not, i- it's a situation where as a, as a council, we know we need to help, we want to be fair, but we also know that the citizens have to take a bit of a hit last year, and we've said to them this is what we need to do, and it has to come down all the way to everybody else as well. We can't just I mean, churches are great and everything else like that, but the reality dictates that we have to make some changes. She's the way it is.
We're hitting the citizens' claims. Well, because you're hitting them on their home and their donations of the church.
Unless you go to church, and then you're good.
Yeah.
Or are you good?
Counsel Rogan?
Just a question, C A O, um are, is there any of these churches benefiting from any other application for granting aid or anything else?
Uh, not at this point, so we haven't had the new applications. Yeah, so previously, the um Free Evangelic and evangelical churches youth group received a grant and aid.
Yes.
Um, but I believe that's the only one on the last cycle, so we haven't seen obviously this year's grant and aids for the twenty twenty fives, but that's important because they they should not be applying for grant and aid. It's clearly in the policy which we sent them.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Fifty percent we're at. Over to you.
Moving on to um Nicola Native Lodge. So assessed value, two million three fifty two. Um, permissive tax exemption options at one hundred percent. This is ten thousand two hundred and seventy seven dollars. And the building is under construction. Uh, and the improvements are not yet calculated, so it has a potential exemption value to be much higher than the ten thousand dollars at a hundred percent. Um, and it is housing or First Nations.
Counsel Regan?
And uh, excuse me, you said the uh for, for uh in other, in other areas, other, other cities for proposals with developments on them?
Yes.
What was the standard?
Um, there are Several municipalities that will not grant an exemption. At all, if there's, if it's under construction.
Thank you. Counselor Echard?
Yeah, I'm not very good at reading some of this financial information, but um. On uh, their page three of their financials, when they add up the beginning balances for all of the bands, it comes to. Two million, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and um, two million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. Um. And they have total assets for five million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-five. Um, as far as I'm concerned, um, if I had that many assets and that much revenue. I would be paying the full amount, and, and I think when people, organizations have this much money. Um. They should be paying, paying the full amount of the um, tax.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Egan?
Yeah, thank you, and I agree with Counselor Sharnie as well, and I've looked through a lot of these um, proposals and financials. And there are a lot of uh, these uh, applicants that are in very good state. So that's why I'm agreeing with Counselor Sharnie.
Okay. Anyone else? So we're suggesting that we have no percentage? Okay, Counselor Egan, Richard.
Um. So right now. That land. Were they paying anything for the land value even last year? Like, is this the first time that they've applied?
No, they did apply last year. Um, and. But the actual exemption was nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Percentage was that?
Was that just the land value?
Yeah, it was just the land.
So your worship, this is one where, at the time of application, the land value was significantly lower.
Yes.
It's been exponential.
It increased.
Four years that the bylaw has been in effect. For B C assessment, it's still only assessed at the land value, which I now believe is two million, correct?
Two point three.
So I think at the time of application, it was only like a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, so it's been a more like exponential in these four years.
Mm-hmm.
And the value of the structure is still not yet factored into B C assessments. This is definitely one where you wanna give us very explicit instructions if you do decide on a percentage. Whether it applies to the land, the structures, or both. Given that. Those structures are not yet even factored into this request.
And there is potential for growth on this property as well. Counselor Ogan?
Um. I hear, you know, those concerns or those statements. I, I feel like, I, I believe in transition, so I don't like to jump from one thing to the other, so from a hundred percent to, to zero. So I also want to recognize what they are bringing to the community. So um, for all these societies, with the exception of the societies on the, in, in the healthcare or food supply. I would like to, to proceed with twenty-five percent at least for, for these societies, except the healthcare and food supply.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor, uh. Echard?
Uh, I, I think um. We were told that they only paid nine hundred and twenty. So really, um, even if we go with zero on this one, it's not a big, big difference to them. It's not like they paid fourteen thousand or ten thousand. So um, I, I still um, will affirm my zero on this one.
CEO?
And I just wanted to confirm um, with Counselor Ogan's uh, suggestion, this is where we would want you to be very specific about. Is this on just the land? Or both? Right? Because again, if you go at twenty-five percent now, this could be ten thousand dollars once the building's finished. So you're going from twenty-five hundred dollar exemption to a ten thousand dollar exemption, which is a pretty significant jump. Um, that we would have to figure out how to observe. So this is exactly as the CFO said. We're not suggesting anything in regards to exemptions, that's your hard decisions to make, but be very specific about it, so that you are thinking about the actual value that you end up with at the end of this bylaw.
Counselor Richard?
So earlier, my question, the reason I was asking what the value was, to see where we were sitting, if it was just a land value, because. Like Counselor Ogan, I was thinking, well. If, if they're just coming in to encourage new building, especially because it's gonna have mixed interracial housing. I think that we should give them something as a goodwill measure to try and encourage more of this type of housing, because right now the costs of building are pretty high. And I think it's um. Right now, we're not getting this revenue, so it'll be new revenue to help us with projects more than we've been receiving, so. I think even if we did twenty-five percent, it's better than. The zero. It shows some kind of goodwill, but we're not giving away. A hundred percent, and if it's only for three years, then we can review it again in three years, but that's just my thoughts.
Counselor Baxter?
So if we say zero or twenty-five percent in three, or like, if we say zero percent, next year can they reapply for this? For your.
So the only people that can apply are the new organizations can apply during the cycle, but it comes back to the same process as you're doing right now. Um, I would say there are other ways for us to support development of new buildings in the community. Um, through other property, other tax exemption systems, um, like development taxes or the reduction of development fees, so. Don't feel like this is the place where you're going to incentivize development necessarily. Um. Because you can't incentivize development for everybody. Here. Right? You can't, this is, they're only applying for this because it is a, um, well, I mean, technically, it is a, a, a partner, it is a, a corporation. It's not a not-for-profit. Um, they are, they do own a fair number of assets within the municipal boundaries and are developing some of those assets. This particular project around housing, um, intergenerational housing is a, a little bit different for them. Um, but again, this isn't where you necessarily wanna be incentivizing. Development, so don't, I don't know if Counselor Echard, that helps to frame that for you.
Counselor Echard?
I'll go back again to the amount of money that they have. And um, over two million dollars, and um. I don't think very many citizens in Merritt have um, two million dollars in their bank account. And would love to have a twenty-five percent, only paying twenty-five hundred dollars. I pay more than twenty-five hundred dollars on my taxes, and I don't have two million dollars. So um, I'll, I wish I did, but um, I'll, I'll go back to, I, I don't think it's any hardship. For um, a company like this to absorb the full amount of the cost of the taxes.
Counselor Ogan?
Yeah, so. I feel the opposite. I feel like this is not about the amount, that I, I, I feel like um, it's the goodwill that uh, Counselor Echard mentioned. So that we are working with these organizations, these are societies, they are, these are non-for-profit organizations that are providing a service. I want to tell them that, yes, we have a good strategic partnership here, a working partnership, and we want, we cannot do fifty or a hundred percent, but at least we can provide the twenty-five percent.
Thank you. Counselor Echard?
Uh, tax exemption is not goodwill. Uh, that is not the intent of um, a tax exemption, it's not goodwill.
So we're sitting at uh, twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to go through this section? This schedule? One by one in this schedule?
We will do, because this is a little, this is a little different.
Perfect, just checking on that.
No, that's fine, that's fine. So um. Yeah, this is what, so i- if we said twenty-five, uh, who would be sticking their hand up? And I would be as well, so we would mark this down at twenty-five. Now is that for both? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. I would wanna, for myself, I would probably, you know, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I, I, I would say twenty-five for the land. The improvements, I'm sh- not sure that's where we wanna go.
Have no, you have no idea what the improvement value would be, and it could put a high level of risk on the organization going forward. Especially since it will actually put a level of risk on the next council, because it is outside of your tenure.
So are we okay on the land and not the other? Okay. So you kinda get zero. Yep, no problem. And you can say why you disagree? If you so wish? Okay, fine.
Less than twenty-five?
Yes.
Absolutely, these are just build options.
I would go five percent.
Well, actually, it's, it's not a motion, it's just, it's just where we're at.
There's so much money. I mean.
To, to me, it's, it's a slap in the face of our taxpayers when they see how much these organizations have, and we are giving them tax exemptions, and they are being. Asked to pay the full amount every year. I think it's a slap in the face that. A, a organization has this much money, is getting a, a reduction in their taxes like that, and they, and our taxpayers are paying for them.
And remember, this is just on the land.
Yes.
Okay. Not improvements. Counselor Echard?
While I agree with the comments and what you're saying. I also. I'm going back to the old comment of where we're trying to get more. New. Clean, nice, tidy housing for people instead of living in maybe basements, suites that aren't. Legal, maybe they're not even safe, maybe they were slapped together during COVID, so people could rent them out for a high limit of rent. Um, and that's what I'm thinking, we have a lot of people renting in some of our units, we have the temporary housing. Uh, agreement that's gonna expire before too long, and I think it's an opportunity to have more nice housing. In an area that isn't prone to flooding, and if we can help it even with a little bit, and in three years it gets decided again, I think it would be helpful. And I think it's a step in the right direction, but maybe I'm wrong.
Question for CFO. Do we know what other grants federally or provincially that they get to help with this? Do we have any idea on that? Okay. Thank you. Uh. I'm gonna go with Counselor Baxter.
So C A O brought up that they could have other ways that we could support them using different funds. So could we not just give them? Rigs that way, instead of doing it this way?
So you used to have other tax exemption programs, so if a development hap- was happening, you would do like a, 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 a graded level of taxation, the first year, they might get zero percent. Taxation, the next year they would go to fifty, the third year they would go to full, like, so there are ways for us to, to create bylaws. That allow for support of new development in the community and tax relief for those new developments. Again, this, and I understand Counselor Echard, this, this is providing housing, which is a very important part of our community. Particularly housing for seniors and low-income um, people in the community. However, you can't incentivize all development this way. So you're actually preferencing one development over other developments through this process. So if you're taking it from that perspective, you're actually. You're actually providing additional support to a company that's doing a development, you're not providing that support to other companies.
Counselor Echard, once again?
Uh, I, I agree with Counselor Echard on the uh, housing. But then I look at the other side, they're gonna bring in more money on that housing, so their bottom line. Is going to increase again, so um. I'm still against um, any tax exemption.
Counselor Egan?
Uh, thank you, I was just wondering exactly where this development is going to be. Twenty-six, forty, spring day.
It's already, it's already up at the end of the road. That's the new apartments that are going up up there.
Okay.
But there's also, I do believe, two other scheduled to go up there as well, and that's why we're talking about the land, because there's two other developments that are gonna go in as well. So. That's where we have to be careful, because if we go in low and all of a sudden. You know, and so that's why we talk the land and not the other. I think we'd be mistaken to go with the other.
Okay, well, I just would like to agree with Counselor Echard, I mean, I, I still believe in zero, but I'm making, I'm making waiver at five percent.
Sure.
On the land.
Uh, your worship, follow up. The, and just to be clear, these financial statements were from March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
So there's been a full year that's elapsed during that time. They had recognized revenue for grants of thirteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. You'll also need to look at deferred revenue on the balance sheet and the liabilities, so if you've received revenue that you have not yet earned, because you haven't delivered on the conditions of that grant. It would be sitting in your deferred revenue for future recognition in your income statement. And so there's seven hundred and eighty-five thousand in deferred revenue, and I'm not saying that's all grant-related, I'm just saying if there was a portion of grants that they had not yet earned. It would be sitting in that seventy-five.
Okay. So good to know, thank you. So folks, uh, I think we're gonna leave this one at twenty-five for now, I think that's probably the opinion, is that what we have here? I know that we have two not having that opinion. But uh, if we said twenty-five, uh, do we, I mean, we can come back to this, let's be honest. This is land only. Yeah, we're not gonna do the other, just land only. Paul? Twenty-five? Uh, Dan and Noel? Adam, twenty-five, myself, twenty-five, Manuel, twenty-five. So we have four, four, three against. No, we can always come back, so we'd say twenty-five on land only. Okay?
All right. The week. Um. The old courthouse. Says enhance economic and social well-being for members. Assess value, six hundred and ten. Um, permissive exemptions are at one hundred percent, seven thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. Total revenue. Six million, two seventy-five, total assets. Three million, four thirty-one.
Thank you. I heard you, what you're gonna say, so Counselor Echard?
I don't wanna ring the same bell, but again, uh. You know, when you get a revenue of six million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars, I think you could afford to pay your taxes.
Thank you, Counselor Baxter?
When was this assessed? Has it been assessed since they've fixed it up?
I would imagine it would be, it says right there.
Um, yeah, the, the building is being renovated. And so again, the exemption will be higher next year.
Mm-hmm. Is there potential for future building on this, or is it, because I know at one time there was eight lots that were actually in that, if you overlaid the. So there is potential for this to be added on to, correct?
Yes, you're right.
Mr. Mayor, there is potential, there is enough room in there for additional improvements.
So we would be on the, this would be on the land again and not the other.
I would suggest that would be the way.
Yeah, I would suggest that as well. Uh, Counselor Egan?
Yeah, thank you, this is one of the first ones that I, that I read, and um, as it's not really for the benefit of the entire community, and because they have a healthy bank account. I'd vote for zero.
Thank you. So we have zero on the table, Counselor Petrosi?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with the zero on this one, it's okay.
Anybody else like to weigh in? Counselor C A O?
I believe this is the one that came as the off-cycle last year. So they only have had one year of tax exemption. Um, at the time, when um, they presented, they indicated that it was a place for cultural wellness, and that all people would be invited to. The facility, much like a church. Um, it is not considered a place of worship by B C assessment, but. Um, I think if you are stretching place of worship, just to, not that I'm suggesting anything, but. If you were suggesting that indigenous culture and indigenous ceremony was part of worship. Um, which many people would probably suggest is ki- the case. Uh, think about it, you may wanna think about those options, but it is um. It is still not fully assessed, it only had one year of support, uh, as per the previous bylaw, so it hasn't had a lot of.
Yeah, as far as the church angle on it, that would be the feds that could decide on that for us. It's not up to us to make that decision, unfortunately, so. We have a zero percent. What is the mood around the table? Anybody wanna say anything else? Counselor Ogan?
Maybe I'm being too positive here, so I am comfortable with twenty-five percent, so uh, there. The financial shows the, the, the revenue. And that expense, if you see the, the expense annually, it's, it's very high. So uh, they are bringing just the surplus from prior years. So eventually that money will, will run out, so if I recognize what they bring to, to the community, and I would be okay with it.
So you're twenty-five?
Yeah.
Counselor Baxter, you're zero? Go on.
Forty-five.
Zero? I'll be at twenty-five, so. Twenty-five, we are. Yep. Sure.
You guys are being far too compassionate when we're, we're a city that's broke.
We're not broke, we're just being careful.
Well, yeah, but we're reminding our dollars, we're still giving, as, as Counselor Echard pointed out a few uh. Uh, properties ago. That, you know, we're, we're, as regular citizens are expected to pay. More than what this twenty-five percent is, nineteen seventy-five, fifty-six, and if you saw the salaries that they're paying out in this company. It's ridiculous.
Then you're allowed to have that opinion.
I know him.
And we're allowed to have ours, so it's kinda the way it goes. Counselor Echard?
The only. Reason that I agree with this is when you take what the old former courthouse used to look like to what it looks like today. They're doing a lot and also raising that assessment quite a bit, so, you know, the old assessment might have been quite a bit less, but, and with all the improvements. I think. I think. They're bringing value and a lot, it's beautifying the community with what they've done, and. We can review this, maybe for three years this works, maybe it doesn't, um if we're only doing it on the land, that's why I think it's reasonable, but. Anyway, that's the only reason why I'm supporting the twenty five. You've seen that building transform into quite a nice attractive building and. I think that's why.
Moving on.
No.
Oh, oh, counselor Charlie.
I I think we have to be accountable to the taxpayers' dollars. And um. Wh- when I see an organization that can afford to beautify something, which most of our homeowners can't afford to. Because they don't have the money, and they are paying full tax dollars, and we give um. Taxes off to an organization that has millions of dollars. Um I think we're not uh being fair to our taxpayers, I think we are putting the burden on them and giving a tax break. To organizations that can afford to pay the full amount of their taxes.
CEO.
Uh I would like to point out, this is not considered a not-for-profit, that may impact some of your decisions, it is not a not-for-profit, it is a for-profit business. That is, they are allowed to make money, yes, whether or not they're actually making money is another question.
Again, we can always review, this is not set in stone, we can come back to this. Before we finish. Before we finish. So it's not all gonna get done in one night, simple as that.
Okay, next one is the. Not exactly sure how to pronounce it, He Lu. Childcare Society. Um again, this is another one, uh lots of um. Construction going on, and there it's two properties, they're hoping to consolidate into one, I think it's already in. Planning and development to consolidate it, they want to um. Uh and have a a bigger playground, and he just said there is upcoming construction. For it. Um the first property. Is assessed value four hundred and six thousand. This is um a daycare. And at one hundred percent, it'll be five thousand two fifty nine fifty three. Uh total assets are not available, this property is being leased. It's a leased property. And the next one. Uh I think it's just the back end of the the daycare, it's on the, or the front end, the Nicola. Side, uh assessed value a hundred and two thousand dollar. Dollars and um hundred percent exemption would be one thousand three twenty one.
So this is a for-profit business, correct?
Uh yes.
Parents do not pay to have their children in this daycare. So how does, when they get paid to? Have childcare as an auto pro- for-profit business?
Childcare facilities are associations that are run by volunteer boards. Because nobody can actually afford to make money in childcare. Especially not if they're renting buildings.
If somebody's making it.
No, I would suggest that they're probably heavily subsidized in the ten dollar day daycare. Uh national program, as most daycares are, uh so child childcare is generally not a. Money-making endeavor. Um I, they are incorporated, so they are technically considered a business. Oh no, sorry, they're under the Society Act, um so they are not, I mean. They are a not-for-profit society.
So being a leased building, this would not fall on the association, but the owner of the land and the building would not. Is tax exemption. This would be on the lease owner. It wouldn't be on the association.
Uh they are. Responsible for pains.
So any leased properties, you're you're, we have confirmed whether or not they are responsible for taxation.
Counselor Charlie.
Uh do we have in uh merit other non-for-profit uh childcare? This is the only childcare that.
There's the one down across from the radio station.
And so they have not applied, just this one. Wait there.
One that's being built.
That's right, that's right, yeah, but I'm talking about the other, yeah.
The only one. As required, and so. Organizations choose and to apply or not, yeah.
Counselor Logan.
Yeah, so um this is a society. They are providing affordable childcare. Childcare, it's a. It's in crisis, in my opinion, not only in merit, but you know, across B C. So I see financials, I see a deficit, so I would like to to support with twenty five percent.
Support with what?
Twenty five percent.
Thank you. Anyone else, counselor Baxter?
It's a childcare facility, and I know how childcare facilities struggle with finances after a while. I would support fifty percent.
Thank you. I will probably agree with the fifty percent as well. Anyone else uh wanna weigh in on that? Counselor Petrosi.
Yeah, I agree that uh yeah, we're in crisis also for childcare in B C, and I agree with fifty fifty percent.
And I know the people that run this, uh one of the ladies I've been constantly contact with, cause she's worried about the cross arc, we're trying to get her the lights in there. They do an amazing job over there, and they really do, and they have to put up with a bit over there as well, so. Uh counselor Etchar.
Um when we pick the twenty five or the fifty, and we have the value in here, you know, in the columns. Like at fifty percent, twenty six, twenty nine, is that? The building and improvements, when it says the four oh six, like, is that what they would be paying?
I'm not sure we can, we talk about improvements on this one, cause they're just leasing the land.
Well, they're leasing it, but it's based on the building amount of four oh six, so I just wanna confirm what.
So I think it's important to recognize there are two lots, one that is currently being used and one that is not currently being used.
Well, actually, using both the, one is the building, the other one's the playground.
No, they're uh.
They they want to develop. Uh a second, uh a new playground.
Yeah, so the parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, so so you may choose to only. Um cause, cause we don't, like, they're hoping, doesn't mean it's actually happening, so you may not want to exempt that second property, you may only want to exempt the first property.
So, okay, just to get my head wrapped around this, so the leasing is okay with them expanding into the property as they're leasing it. But let's say two years from now, the leasing decides that he's gonna yank the lease and put an apartment down there.
So that has to be reported by the property owner, or and or the. The person with the grant, uh with the tax exemption, has to be reported and and then the bylaw gets modified.
Isn't it for sale?
I I have no idea, I don't know.
It was, I don't know if it is or not.
It was a big sign.
Well, he, it was, you you had to buy, you had to buy, it used to be Merritt Motors, right?
Merritt Importer.
Yeah, and they owned all both those buildings, that used to be the Dodge dealership.
You bet, I would never forget that, and the cross street was their shop with the old technical, but but. But. What I'm wondering is, it wasn't it recently just for sale, like in the last month or two? Or is that come down, yeah. Just before we say.
Well, that's why I'm saying, like, you don't know what the outcome or what the disposition of that second lot will be. You only know the what the first lot is, so exempting the second lot, that's like, you know, saying, I, you know, I would like to. Get a loan to buy that house that I might buy. Right, like, you you don't know what the disposition is, so you may want to. Cautiously consider that you only are using, much like the land versus the building. You don't know what the outcome is going to be, and what risk you're putting the organization in.
So CFO would be a good idea for us to just to land on this one? I mean, just how you feel about the future of what could happen with.
We could certainly do that, or you could choose a percentage. For the law that has the structure and assign a different percentage, cause there's separate rule numbers, and we'll publish the bylaw based on.
Good, thank you. Counselor Baxter.
I'd like to do fifty percent on the actual daycare and zero on the lot that we don't know.
Counselor Ogden.
Okay, I was gonna go with fifty percent on the building, and in the other lot, twenty five percent.
So we have fifty and zero, or fifty and twenty five, where do we stand? No, you're just gonna show your hand here. Fifteen zero, counselor Baxter. Fifty twenty five, counselor Petrosi. Fifteen zero it is. Thanks, everyone.
Land only because we don't know what the.
Yes, land only, because we don't know what's gonna happen on the building. Cause we don't know what's gonna happen with the the other lot. I mean, I I, again, i- if they actually own this outright, it'd be a different, I I would have probably gone fifty twenty five. But because we're not really sure what could happen in the future. And I'll probably address that later, but. Counselor Logan.
Just to be clear, so in the actual daycare, there is a building and there is a land. What you are saying that we are going to apply fifty percent only on the land of of that lot.
No, sorry, I think it's the building, uh the existing building, am I confused now? I bet you have confused everyone.
So.
Cause we wanted to give fifty percent on the actual building that's there, and then zero on the land, is that what I'm talking about?
Each property gets assessed a land value and an improvement value, right, so. What you've got in this situation is the la- the the land that has a building on it. So there's a land assessment, a building assessment, the second property that they're hoping to develop on is another parcel. So you have another land, so that individual parcel with no develop, with no improvements, you've said zero. The other one, you've got the building on the land, they each have their own, the land and the building, or the improvement have their own assessment value, so. Is this a land, a building, or both? I mean.
Each, so the land is worth uh one thirty five, and the building is two seventy one.
And you understand that. We work happening on the building in the near future.
And they are. They are working.
There's it, there's development applications in, so we know something is happening. So you, this might be a place where, again, you do wanna wait to see what happens and what the value becomes.
So, so, oh, hold on a second, counselor Baxter, you had your lady on.
Um so land only on this one.
Okay.
I'm all favor of the land.
Okay. Counselor uh Charlie.
So wh- when we do the land only. Then they pay full on the building. Okay, I'm land only.
But you're sent land on. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anya Friendship Society. So I did this um. I wanted to do a summary because they've put in. Seven applications. The first application is. On the. On the actual um. Where they meet, uh picture of it, if you look at the the twenty one sixty fourth Pashana Avenue. And we, we did um allow that in the last cycle. They were part of the exemption, but this year they've applied for several. Um another six properties, uh low-income housing. So it's sort of two, the buildings are, the first first building, twenty one sixty four is used as. I think it's an office meeting place. Yeah, it's the Friendship Center, so um I wanted to. Do a title page so you could see their total value of land for the society. And the requested exemption at a hundred percent is thirty six thousand dollars. And then I did break it up into separate, so you could go. By each property.
Thank you. Oh, counselor Charlie.
Uh if we add up all the exemptions, it comes to seventy three thousand four hundred and seventy nine dollars and forty two cents. Um that that's a big exemption. And um especially for when they have a revenue of uh. Two million dollars and assessed value of land at just under seven million dollars. Um so I would like to open it up discussion.
Um the 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 total exemption for all properties is thirty six thousand dollars.
You you dipped, you double dipped.
Yeah, so and I want to say that uh when we check financial, just check uh the income and expenses for that year, and also. Where is the amount carried over from prior years, so uh it's a. I wouldn't feel comfortable providing to all the all the applications, but I would like to provide to the main building twenty five percent.
Twenty five to the main and nothing for the others? Where do we sit? I'm probably willing to support that as well. I think it's a good decision. I'm not seeing anybody. Twenty five to the main, nothing to the others. Counselor Petrosi?
Yeah, I'm in support of the twenty five.
Twenty five it is, nothing to the others. Twenty one sixty four. Twenty one sixty, yeah, yeah. Well, I I don't, I I don't, I mean, I've been to the building a million times, and I know they have a parking lot in the back, but I don't know if there's a lot of room for expansion, I don't know.
This point for upgrading that building.
It it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, but up is different.
But within the three years, it's, I mean, it doesn't prove the, it doesn't prove the improvements, I'm like, it'll increase the assessment on the improvement. Um but we haven't seen anything. From them, it's not in process, so I mean, in three years, it might happen. So that's.
But I I don't know. Yeah, always for both, and I agree, because I don't see a lot of. Movement, I mean, that's, this building has been used now for what, fifteen, twenty years? Uh sale.
And I I mean, friendship societies are, this seems to be a very consistent friendship society, my experience. With friendship societies in other parts of this country, is that because they are often very heavily funded by federal government grants, which are notoriously. Inconsistent uh. For to have a friendship society that continues to be able to operate is pretty impressive, but they're probably very grant. Um supported for a lot of their programming.
Counselor Logan.
Oh, uh just want to mention for the next one, I want to uh declare conflict of interest. So I'm not sure if I need to stay or or leave for that one, so let me know.
Thank you, also.
The next uh, the next one is um Community Futures in the Cala Valley, even though I work for the provincial organization, it's Community Futures. So I feel like I should step outside for this.
Uh it's like right beside there, right beside the dental clinic, I couldn't get the picture quite right, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, it's the next building over. Linda.
Okay, so assessed value one sixty five, one hundred. Um. Permissive exemption at a hundred percent is two thousand one thirty eight seventy nine. Total revenue is twenty three thousand four hundred. And to the last sets, one fifty six, one seventy five. Um to promote and encourage growth in the merit economy is there. They do.
So if anybody has dealt with CF, I'm not sure if you know how the structure works, but they help businesses get off the ground. And then they get paid back, and I do believe they get a certain percentage of that life of that business, I do believe. Counselor Charlie.
I think this is good organization, um I would probably go fifty percent, but I'm wondering, long-term debt. Um. It's unusual for us to see something like that, so they owe a lot of money.
Well, because you're taking a chance, you're loaning money to people who are on a business situation.
So the, okay, so that is.
Yeah.
Part of their working, okay, okay.
CFO, do we know that it, does Western Economic Development still have a bit to do with CF, or are they kind of on their own now? But do we see anything from Western, I know Western Economic Development was very big. With the C uh Community Futures for a number of years.
You would have to take that as a follow-up question and have the response for that next regular.
Okay, thank you. But that's to be expected on a loan, this is a loan institution, so they do loan money out. So uh there's always gonna be a debt to a certain degree. Counselor Baxter.
I agree with fifty percent on land and building.
Where else, everyone, fifty percent, we cool with that? Fifty percent it is. Fifty percent it is, land and bills. Somebody can let Mr. Ogden know you can come back in. I'll get. Oh, Linda's gonna. I like the merit Elks, it's nothing. It's nothing. The lot that you're looking at is ours. Well, the lot is the parking lot, right? What do you understand? It's a parking lot. Well, the one right, the one across the street, the picture is our, our lot. It, it, they've, they've taken the camera, but they need to turn the camera around.
They got two, they got two.
Yeah, the parking lot is obviously the other whole thing, because it's a giant parking lot, right?
Well, they got one area.
It's a parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not going, not going, not going into the school field, but i- if you go to the field, there's the school parking. And then there's the Elks park.
They are, they are correct, right?
An odd and an even number on Coldwater, they're across the road from one another.
Well, I thought that was.
Based on these.
I thought that was our property.
That, that, some of it is our property, some of it is not.
Okay, okay.
Some of it, that big arc de lot, some of it is ours and some of it is not.
Okay.
Yeah.
That we have that settled? Should know that we have that settled.
Thanks.
Yep.
Uh, Merit Elks, they have the two properties, seventeen oh one, Coldwater, and seventeen oh two. So assessed value on the, um, parking lot, one twenty-six. The permissive exemption at one hundred percent would be five fifty. Um, total revenue for twenty twenty-three, uh, hundred and one thousand eight eleven, uh, total assets, five hundred and eighty thousand eight twenty-three. And then the seventeen oh two is the one with their building on it. Its assessed value is three sixty-six. Um, at one hundred percent exemption would be three thousand six twenty-five forty-four.
So. Well, for myself, um, I'm, I'm, as far as the land. I would maybe go twenty-five. Uh, for the other one, the land and the building. Now, this is again a group that's been around for a lot of years. They do use that hall for bingo. They also donated out when we had the flood. I think they were pretty much full gear for six, eight months. I don't think there was any cost to anybody using it, so. It does come into, uh, it does come into use a lot. There are a lot of. Um, city functions that go on in there. Uh, I do believe there is a rental charge for it, but I don't think it's too crazy, but, um. Counselor Baxter.
Well, and in the past, they had, um, gotten a lot of the Christmas hamper's there at the food bank. I don't know that they have the last couple of years, but they did in the past. Uh, when I was a board member and that was very helpful, and so I would definitely be in support of giving them at least a twenty-five on the land.
On the land?
Yeah.
So, uh, what about the other, so we're talking two properties here, seventeen oh one, seventeen oh two. So twenty-five on both, land and building?
Yeah.
On each one.
Uh, Counselor Baxter?
I would like to give them fifty on each one.
On each one, Counsel Regan?
I would, I would agree with Counselor Baxter, fifty percent, mainly because I don't see anywhere in here where they, they pay somebody to do. They don't have any staff. I think it's all run by volunteers.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Counselor, uh, Petrosi? You're gonna have to eat your butt. Oh, me? Sorry.
Twenty, twenty-five on each one.
Okay, thank you. I think we've got a split room here, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I just think, uh, this is a point of interest. Counsel may want to consider the fact that you're giving a tax exemption to an organization that gives things away. Right? So you're giving your tax revenue to an organization that gives it away.
Well, one of the things we have in our, um, our, uh, grant and aid is that, uh, we don't allow someone to take our grant and aid and then give it to. The John Howard Society.
Mm-hmm.
In our name.
Yeah.
Or in their name, because they could do that ourselves.
So they're giving away in kind significantly more than they're getting in your tax exemption. So is there, you know, just think about value that way.
So I have twenty-five percent on both, I have fifty percent on both, so where are we going here? Counselor Ogden?
I'm going to switch. Go fifty percent.
Fifty percent on both? Counsel Regan?
I was gonna change to twenty-five percent on both, yeah.
Okay, Counselor Baxter?
How about we just go fifty percent on the building and only twenty-five percent on the empty lot?
Or land.
But the, so, so there is land underneath the building.
Well, the, the land.
So you want to go fifty on the building, twenty-five on both sets of properties?
Yeah.
Land.
Um, no, like fifty on the land underneath the, where the building is and twenty-five percent on the empty lot.
So, so you wanted to. On tw- seventeen oh two.
Yeah.
Coldwater, you want to do fifty percent on both. And on seventeen oh one Coldwater, you want to do. Twenty-five percent on the land because it could get developed, so you want to be spec- specific that it's on the land.
So I think seventeen oh one, we're all agreed on twenty-five percent.
Okay. On the land.
On the land, because there's no, well, there's nothing there yet.
Yeah, but it could get developed.
There's a couple of times, which I think is a good idea. Now, seventeen oh two. What do we want to do there? Fifty on land only. Counsel Regan, you're on.
Oh, sorry, um, I would still say, what did I go back to? I went, uh.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yeah, twenty-five on land and building.
Five on land and building?
So the land is worth one oh nine, the building is worth two fifty-seven.
There you go.
One, one oh five?
One oh nine for the land and two fifty-seven.
Okay.
For the seventeen oh two.
And you're staying at seventy, you're just suggesting twenty-five for both, for both? Okay. No, I'm, I'm just looking, I'm just waiting for somebody to hit a button and, and give me, because if we don't hear anything, we're gonna move on. Hold on, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, Counsel Ogden?
So, uh, I'm still comfortable with it, uh, fifty percent on both.
On both, okay. Counsel attorney, you were yacking there.
Yeah, I, I was yacking. Um, so we've already discussed seventeen oh one is twenty-five percent land only, so now we're back to seventeen oh two.
Yes.
Um, I'd be comfortable on fifty percent land only.
Percent land only? I'm gonna join Counsel Ogden at fifty percent on both because I know a lot of the work that this group does, so. I know that they've been there to help people out, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so I'm gonna go as well as fifty percent on both. Unless we, Counsel, uh, we have fifty percent on land only from Counsel Charlie and twenty-five percent on both from Counsel Regan. There's only two of us that agree on fifty percent, so.
Are we on both?
Okay, so.
Uh, Elks do a great job around town. They help out, they, they donate the time for the food hamper to be built in there. I think they're worth it.
Counsel Petrosi?
Okay, fifty percent on both.
Done.
Yep.
Sold to the man in the funny shirt. Yes, that's me, my candy cane shirt. Funny shirt.
Hey. Uh, next one is Merit Use and Family Resource Society. Uh, nineteen fourteen Pashana Avenue, assessed value is eight hundred and fifty-four thousand. Uh, permissive exemption at a hundred percent would be five thousand two forty-two fifty-one. Um, total revenue, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand eight fifty, total assets, uh, two million. Fifty-seven, two hundred and three.
Thank you. So this is gonna be for building and land because I don't think they have any movement on the land now. I think they've used up every square inch they got. No, it's not, but yeah, Counsel Regan? Yeah, no, it's not, they're still going through some of the processes.
Maybe.
Which we deal with a lot. Counsel Baxter?
I would be willing to do twenty-five percent on, uh, land and building.
Thank you. Counsel attorney?
Uh, is the reason we don't have a proper financial because they haven't started?
No, they're existing in another spot. They've been existing for a while in another spot, but they've been given, uh, they've been given, given an eviction notice.
Yeah, but we don't.
Out of that spot.
All we have is like a T-four type.
Yeah, instead of the, they did not give me a balance sheet or income statement, instead they gave me their, their tax filing.
Yeah.
Which has, which has that information.
Uh.
If you look at the page eight. It's their total assets.
Yeah, that's where I got circled, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay. I, I would be comfortable with twenty-five percent land only.
Counsel Rogan?
Yep, same, I would be comfortable with twenty-five percent.
I think we're all there. I think twenty-five percent is where we're going with that. Uh, land and building.
Land.
Oh, land only, okay.
I say land.
I say both as well. There we are. So?
I have to go to the wash.
How about we take a, uh, five-minute smoke break here? Microphones off, please. Microphones off, please. Thank you. All right, everyone, we're back. Um, okay, so, uh, timeline tonight, where are we going? Eight o'clock, eight-thirty? What do we want to do here? Do we have to do this all tonight?
Scheduled for tomorrow.
Okay, so I think probably we'll go to about eight-thirty and then we'll call it a night. Okay, Linda, you're on.
Next one, uh, Nicola Valley Association for Community Living. Uh, better known as Skalula. Uh, assessed value, three hundred and eighty-three. Total revenue, three hundred and ninety-two thousand, total assets, three hundred and seventy. Permissive exemption at one hundred percent is four thousand nine sixty-one fifty-seven. And again, uh, training and support for adults with mental and physical disabilities.
Thank you. Counsel Regan?
Thank you. Um, I was just wondering what they got in the last three-year cycle?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent. Um, just because of who they are and what they do for everybody in town, I agree for the hundred percent.
Thank you, Counselor Baxter.
I agree a hundred percent.
Counsel attorney?
I totally agree on this. I think this organization does a fantastic job. Um, they're dear to my heart and, um, I think a hundred percent for this group.
Counsel Ogden?
Yeah, I'm, I am on the same page.
Oh, there it is. Moving on.
Nicola Valley. Community.
Both, both, yeah.
Uh, Nicola Valley Community Human Services are better known as Nicola Valley Therapy, Family Therapy. Uh, assessed value one hundred and thirty. Permissive exemption at a hundred percent is one thousand six eighty-nine twenty-seven. Total revenue three hundred and seventy-five thousand, total assets two hundred and eighteen thousand.
Uh, CL. We give these people a pretty good break on the rent, do we not?
Uh, yeah, I believe we're below market.
Councilor Baxter.
Um, the work they do in town and the necessity that we needed in the community, I'm willing to do fifty percent.
Thank you. Councilor Oden.
So. Uh, again, so I deal with people with disability, with people who has uh, the need of those services. I think this organization is criti- critical. So I would go either with seventy-five or a hundred percent.
Councilor Churney.
Um, I think considering that they are uh, rental at below market value, um, I think that more than makes up for uh, the tax exemption and I would go twenty-five percent.
I uh, I'm gonna support a hundred percent. Uh, one of the reasons I will is because uh, the service is used by my family and a lot of other families through the flood. Uh, and I know they're for, they're for people who can't afford services. So to me, it's a critical situation. So I'm gonna go a hundred. Um, Councilor. Josie.
I am in agreement with a one hundred percent.
Councilor Egan.
I was gonna say seventy-five, but that's fine.
Okay, we're good to go, I think. Four. Or in the four. Huh? No, you have one, two, three.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to confirm this is not.
A not-for-profit. Right?
That's fine.
I, I don't know if you know how much counselors make, but.
Yeah, we're.
FYI.
Yeah, but it, it's, it's, it's the fact that uh.
Aren't running the place.
It, it's the fact that I, I see a lot of the work that they do in there and I may, I went to their open house. Um, you know, uh, we know we're giving them a break for them to be there. But this is needed in the community. It really is. It's something that we actually absolutely have to have for those who cannot have the funds to move forward. So it's gotta be there.
So I just wanna be clear, we have other counseling services in the community. They're running out of people's homes. So should any of them submit in future, you would have to consider in them the same fashion, right? You can't preference one company over another. Um, that would be a pretty significant conflict. So I just wanna clarify. So if in future, one of those counseling companies that works out of somebody's house, um, private business, that is essentially the same thing that's happening here.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Cause it, this is a storefront and I mean, this is a, a visible, they're here. So uh, somebody working out of somebody's house will have a different opinion on, um, they're already paying for their mortgage. So uh, if you catch my drift, so um, we'll wait till that actually shows up.
Just, just.
Yep.
I want a clarification on that. So if we give a hundred percent exemption to this facility, someone else is running out of their home, are we setting a precedent for that facility to get one hundred percent tax exemption also?
Or some portion of that they use for their home, right? That they use for their office in their home or any other storefront counseling service.
But they will also.
So just to be clear, this is not registered as a not-for-profit, is I'm correct?
That's right.
Right? So it is technically, they do charge for services at the going rate for counseling services, which can be significant. Um, they get to mostly probably bill people's health insurance, but nonetheless, there, this is a pro-. So if you do this for this one, if other ones come forward, knowing that you've set this precedent, you will likely have to consider all other counseling services in the same way.
What did they get in the last cycle?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent, all of it.
Everybody got a hundred percent.
Everybody got a hundred percent that we were talking about today.
Oh. I personally feel if we gave fifty percent.
Councilor Oden.
So. So we can't provide financial support to an individual business and ultimately providing a tax exemption to this business would be in conflict with what council is allowed to do under the charter.
Okay.
To check.
Um, then it shouldn't have been brought to us.
Yeah.
They've already not, yeah.
Error made all apart and that got taken out. Um, but ultimately. I'm correcting it right now.
You, you.
So.
So their lease agreement does allow them to pursue an exemption with us because this property is in City Hall and that is permitted under the charter. So while you are not allowed to directly financially assist a business, there is provisions in the charter to consider it in this instance and their lease agreement does say that they are allowed to apply. Doesn't guarantee anything from council in terms of a granting of an exemption, but their lease agreement says that they're allowed to apply. Correct. And there's provisions for those in this charter as well, so.
Yep. Councilor Oden.
Uh-huh. Okay, so uh, just to make sure that it's clear. So under the lease agreement, yes, they are encouraged to apply or allowed to apply. But under the community charter, are they allowed to apply or not?
Sounds like.
As we've put it in our lease, that yes, we can because it's on city property. But that's the only reason why, because we don't charge, we don't tax ourselves. Probably is the, is the justification for that.
But they've been receiving this already.
Yeah, because we don't tax ourselves.
Mm-hmm.
That's why they've been receiving it.
Yeah.
So where.
Hold it, hold it, hold it.
Sorry.
So. Councilor B- Councilor Baxter.
How long is their lease for? Are, are they gonna be able to move out of the building and still get the tax exemption no matter where they go?
It applies with this lease.
Yep. Councilor Egan.
Um. Okay, so is this, it's not in the land, right? Obviously, because we own the land. So it's just on the building. But if we own the buil- we own the building too, then what's, I, I think this whole thing is moved.
It's like the golf course and the curling club, right? We own the curling club land. We don't charge them, we don't charge them taxes for that because we own the land. Right? We're not charging, um, we don't, we, this is where it gets really complicated when you have people leasing public lands and public space from the municipality versus a corporation outside of the municipality, right? That's why the golf course is so complicated. This, we charge here, but we don't charge there. We allow exemption here. We don't allow exemption there in different parts of that.
So technically, this should be zero.
I mean, for some reason, for some reason on our lease, we're charging them the rent or the, the tax, a portion of the tax, but we're exempting it. So that doesn't make a lot of sense.
So basically it's zero.
Yes, it's zero.
So I think we'll just uh, zonk this one. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
At the time, part of City Hall essentially got pursued off on a separate rule. And so if you assign zero, they will receive a tax bill from us. So I just wanna make that clear.
So if we.
While we own this land in the building.
If we tax them, then they won't see anything. Like, you, you're not making sense here. If, if we say zero, they'll get a tax bill.
From B C assessments perspective, they have apportioned off a value of our building that we owned and put it on a separate polio rule. So if you assign zero, they will receive a tax bill from us.
You want to assign a hundred if you have.
A hundred. Yep.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I needed to hear.
Okay.
So I guess we'll go a hundred. Yeah, I'm. What's the point? Well, yeah, they don't pay any, so it's our, in our buildings. Councilor Egan, you're on.
Sorry.
Okay. Next one.
Okay. One thousand six hundred eighty-nine.
Yeah, well, it's, it's just a number. We, we're not gonna collect it. It's like in kind, right?
Okay, the next is uh, uh, Nicola Valley Food Bank Society. Their goal is to make sure no one in our community goes hungry. So they have two properties. Twenty-three fifty-two Koshana and eighteen ninety-eight Lair. They want to, the, the lots empty. They're hoping to build a new home for the food bank, which includes a warehouse for storing products. So twenty-three fifty-two Koshana, assessed value is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. At a hundred percent, it would be one thousand six hundred and ten dollars. Their total revenue, two sixty-four, two fifty-one, seventy-one. Their total assets, eight sixty-five, seven thirty-six. And the other property that goes with it, assessed value is four hundred and thirty-six, two hundred. And at a hundred percent, it would be five thousand six fifty, seventy-five.
Thank you. Councilor Oden.
So I'm con- confused here. So we're talking about the existing and the new location.
No, the new location is two lots. The new location is two lots, where the old gravel place used to be. It's two separate lots, but it's surrounded as one, but it's two lots.
That's the one on Blair.
That's the one on Blair, the one downtown they don't own.
But Koshana, twenty-three fifty-two?
Yeah, you got, you, you got, yeah, you got this road, Manuel, and then you got this road.
I see.
So it's a corner lot. So we're basically just talking about the bear lot over by Aspen Planer. It's two lots. They are leasing the building that they're in right now. So I uh, every Tuesday I do a walk around the community and I go to the, the food bank. And um, the need is greater than ever. It's, yeah, it was a long line today. It's a tough go to get food. Uh, I know how hard they're working and there are working poor that are standing in that line and they are. It's just that simple. So um, now, the one thing we have to be aware of here though, is there's quite a big potential for building on both of those properties in the future. Uh, they have big plans with big buildings. Uh, but these buildings are to house the food bank. So the whole idea is nobody stands outside in the heat and the cold anymore. Um, they're able to bring in more freezers, more food. Right now, they, they're limited on what they can do and how they can help because they've just simply run out of room. There's just no room for them at all. The building is like a hot box in there. I mean, even on the coldest days, the fans are going, it's not the most pleasant place to be and it's all volunteers, except for one or two. Um, but I mean, they do wanna get into this new lot. Um, not sure where they are on that. I keep getting invited to a, a general meeting, but I'm always at T N R D. I don't know what the deal is. Anyway, uh, Councilor Oden.
I know, I understand what this organization brings to the community. It's again, critical, so I would go with a hundred.
Okay, on both?
Sorry.
Both.
Any potential development?
It's, I don't think that there is gonna be any building in the next three years. So I would go with, with uh, both for the time being and reassessing in three years from now.
Oh, Councilor Baxter, push your button.
I'd go with both, hundred percent.
Councilor Churney.
How can you go with both if there's no building on it?
Well, it's future. You're, we've done this before with other ones, right?
And they both do have a small building.
Yeah, well, that's not really a building. That's a garden. There's a warehouse somewhere and a small warehouse that was there. There's.
Ever the assessment comes in at, if something gets built on it next year, next week, the new assessment value will be the total amount. So as the assessment changes, you will continue to, to pay that amount.
Well, I, I would go a hundred percent on land only.
So we've got a hundred for two, for a hundred percent on both, one for a hundred percent on land only.
Is it one thousand?
One hundred percent on both. Okay.
Yeah.
That's three. I tend to see Councilor Churney's view, a hundred percent on the land only, because I don't see buildings going up in the next three years. I just don't. So. So it's uh, one, two, three, four. So hundred percent land only. For now. On both.
Next up, Nicola Valley Healthcare Auxiliary. Uh, nineteen eighty-seven Cooley. Again, it's uh, two, two role numbers. Uh, nineteen eighty-seven Cooley and eighteen forty-nine Boat Street. On the eight, nineteen eighty-seven Cooley, assessed value a hundred and fourteen thousand. Permissive exemption at a hundred percent would be one thousand four seventy-six eighty-one. Total revenue, two ninety-seven, eight sixty-five. Total assets, six nineteen, five sixty-two. On the eighteen forty-nine Boat Street. Uh, assessed value, one seventy-six, seven hundred. Exemption at a hundred percent would be two thousand two eighty-nine oh six. Total, and then total revenue assets the same.
Again, another group that uh, does a lot of work in the community, a lot of volunteers in there. Um, Councilor Egan.
Yeah, so eighteen forty-nine, is that the actual thrift shop or is this this empty lot?
Nineteen eighty-seven is the actual thrift shop. Eighteen forty-nine is a lot right beside it.
Yeah. Okay.
No record, okay.
So I would go. No, I think, I think maybe twenty-five percent on the land.
Just so you know, everything that gets sold in that goes right back into the community, right into the hospitals or, so.
No, I was thinking a hundred percent for the actual store and twenty-five percent on the land.
So the actual store will be a hundred percent for land and store?
Uh, no. Twenty-five percent on the land, a hundred percent on the store. I would say twenty-five percent on the land.
Councilor Oden.
So a hundred percent for both on the actual rich uh, store. And twenty-five percent on the, on the land on the other.
I do believe the land building in the far side, because they do support this community a lot.
Looking at a hundred percent on both. Two. Oh, sorry. Hundred percent twenty-five, right? So in nineteen eighty-seven, clearly the actual building, so a hundred percent on the land and the building at nineteen eighty-seven and twenty-five on the empty lot? Okay. I, I'll agree with that one as well. I think that's a good idea. Yeah, so I think that's the way we'll go. Uh, so the nineteen eighty-seven Cooley will be a hundred percent on the land and the building. And eighteen forty-nine vote will be twenty-five percent on the, on the land. Again, just because future building, who knows, it could go in there. Just a question. And maybe, I don't wanna delay this any longer. Let's see Nicola Valley Healthcare decides to sell that spot of land. Yeah. So long, so we'd have to go through the process of the new owners of what we would do for them? What goes in, right? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying.
Okay, Nicola Valley Healthcare Endowment Foundation. And again, two properties, pictures aren't the best. Um, assessed value, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand on the Boat Street property. And that's all it's listed as, is Boat Street. Uh, permissive exemption at a hundred percent is nine thousand five twenty-one fifty-six. Total revenue, a hundred and fifty-five thousand four thirty-six. Total assets, four million twenty-five eighty-nine.
Hey, so the hospital. Councilor Baxter, no, maybe, yes, Councilor Baxter.
Um, I would say zero. I'm sorry, but the amount of times it's been shut down, I'd say zero.
So just, so we're, so just, just we're, yeah, just so we're aware that this is not B C Medical that owns this building. It's, it's an endowment group. So just so we're aware. For both properties?
Yeah.
Land and, land and building on both?
Is there?
Well, one.
Well, that's.
Yeah.
Nurses' house, and now it's like sometimes.
So fifty percent for the land and building on both? Land only, okay.
Can expand that whole bit.
Okay, yep. Yeah, good luck. Can't even give us back a hundred and three thousand dollars, cheap buggers. So we're looking at fifty percent on land only on both. And if that we're right, Councilor Baxter, okay? Fifty percent land only on both. Councilor Churney.
Um, here again, I, I'm gonna go like, they got four million dollars in investments. Um, four, four million dollars. Um, to, to me, they can uh, pay at least. I don't care what it. I don't care what it is. It's, it's still an investment. It's, it's money coming in. So if you've got that much money coming in. Um, I know they, they donate here and there, but I think you could pay. I would say fifty percent, a minimum fifty percent. Oh, I thought it was a hundred percent.
No, no, fifty percent on land. And I think we have to be careful because there's a lot of, there's a lot of land up there, a lot of land.
Yeah.
So I think the fifty percent on land is, uh, land only is probably a good idea. We all agree on that? It's a wrap. And both.
Nicola Valley Rodeo Association. Three nineteen Lindley Creek Road. Assessed value, one million nineteen. Permissive exemption at a hundred percent is nine thousand two eighty-nine. Total revenue, three forty-seven, seven eighty-six. Total assets, one million ninety-six, two thirty-two.
So we also, they get permissive tax exemption. We also throw in a five thousand dollar platinum, um.
Yep.
Of sponsorship. And I do believe they get a grant aid.
Yes, typically they've, uh, gotten and or applied for all. Um, I think the last grant, not this last one, but the one previous to that, they got the maximum, they generally get seventy-five hundred. Um, and they didn't get as much this last one because we topped it out. Smaller amount, didn't we?
They didn't get any.
Oh, they got zero last time. Right.
Yeah.
So, so my, so for myself. This is one of the oldest rodeos we've got going. It's a, a huge draw. Uh, the group that is working it now has done amazing stuff up at that rodeo grounds. The new entrance is here and they're always trying to improve. Um, I think what we have done in the past CFO is we have put that platinum sponsorship money away. Pre-budget just so we can have it for them. So we always put that away. So that's always there because I think it's important. That the city of Merritt Banner be in that arena at all times because if we don't support our own rodeo, who else is going to? Um, and I know they're doing a lot of hard work up there. I know, uh, it, it, I don't believe anybody gets a dime out of that place. Um, but you can't have everything. And that's, I think, where we're at because you can't have everything. So. Counselor Baxter. Now, we're gonna be do fifty percent land and building on this as well because, uh, what are we talking about here?
And the policy currently states that you cannot have a budgeted line item and a permissive tax exemption. And or a grant aid. So you have to choose what you would like them to have.
No, 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 no. So if we go that route, then we have to pull the five thousand dollar platinum sponsorship.
Cash, so that, I, I think it's better for us as well.
I agree with that.
Hold on a second, we've got something going on here.
If I was clarifying, they don't have their own line, but they are considered yours, one of your standard sponsorships, just like the Centennial.
Yes, they're not.
So they don't have a line, but they already get five thousand dollars from you. So I think the spirit of it is the same thing. Um, they may not have their own actual, might not say rodeo, but it, it is standard as part of your sponsorship.
So legally. We could still give them a, a tax exemption. Or no? Are we, are we bending the rules?
Policy updates, the current policy that was updated this year. States that they cannot have grant aid or a line item, as if they are successful.
So basically, so basically the grant aid is out there. Any grant aid that comes is not.
The grant aid would be out, but the sponsorship is still within council's budget to portion as they see fit. It's just implicitly built into that sponsorship budget, but they are not a separate line item. But they would not be eligible for grant aid for the next three years if they receive this exemption.
Uh, the CFO is not a lawyer. So how we've formatted that versus how, so just to be clear, we're not giving you a legal opinion. Which is what the mayor asked for.
Got it.
Then perhaps we should wait until we know for sure before we make a decision on this one. Legally.
Yeah, let's pull this one out. Let's red flag this one, not one for now. I think it's important that we do. I don't want to see. That group start to falter because of decisions that we've made and we're not sure about. So let's red flag this one and get an opinion on it. Please. Everybody okay with that? Counselor Ogan, oh, you're on.
Yeah, so, um, I was just wondering, um, there had been some changes to the policy. And in the past, we were able to support them. So now with these new changes, we are not too. So, um, would that have, I think that it would have been beneficial to when they submitted the application to let them know so that they could make a choice. No, they didn't know. And they, what did they say?
All of the applicants, the previous applicants. Um, and I believe you've spoken or attempted to speak to anyone who was in conflict on some of those things.
I did, I did not, the rodeo association because.
But they've always asked for grant aid. Okay, but it is in the policy and it was disseminated as part of the application process.
I mean, also, Counselor, if, if we're giving them the five thousand dollar platinum, then they're, they're not getting a grant aid. It's just that simple. We can't do both. So. Can't do both. But we just need to, we just need to have a more of an opinion on what we can do because they're not really a line item.
Correct, but I don't want him to be perceived as giving you a legal opinion on that.
That's red, that's red line.
Just to be sure.
Yeah, that's red line this one for now. We'll come back to this one.
Okay, next up, Nicola Valley Senior Housing Society. Provide low-cost rental housing to seniors in Merritt. Rents are sixty percent of current market. And they are a nonprofit society. Nineteen thirty-eight Cootley, assessed value is one two sixty-eight. Permissive exemption at a hundred percent would be five thousand five forty fifty-three. Total revenue, sixty-three, five fifty-one. Total assets, one thirty-eight, three fifty-six.
I'm prepared to state a hundred percent on this one. There we are. We don't want to ruffle seniors' lives. No, I mean, really. It's when you see some of the amounts that are being charged for seniors residents now. They don't need any more aggravation. Counselor Baxter.
I want to do a hundred percent. They worse, the soldiers that fought for us, they deserve to have a hundred percent.
Counselor Ogan?
I'm a hundred percent on both.
Counselor Egan?
I'm a hundred percent as well. And although most of them have passed away, it's still their families and, and what they.
Hundred percent it is. On both. So this is on building only? Oh, I'm sorry, Lynn, can you do that again? Edge your mic off. Sorry. Let's do that again. Sorry.
Sorry. Um, Merritt Curling Club. Twenty twenty-five Mamet Avenue, assessed value, six eighteen. Permissive exemption at a hundred percent would be eight thousand five eighty-eight. Total revenue, seventy-five eighty. Total assets, two thirty-four, three sixty. The Curling Club is a volunteer organization. Their goal is to care and operate for the facility and the citizens of Merritt.
And this is just for the building because we own the land, correct? Yes, okay. Now, just to, uh, a year ago, we gave them eighty thousand for the roof. And then when I said on council, we gave them a further forty-five thousand for the roof over the last, so I think total. Over the last ten, twelve years, we've given them close to a hundred and fifty thousand for the roof up there. So. Just so we're what, T N R D also kicked in some money for that as well. Who's up first? Counselor Egan?
Well, until I was reminded about that, I was gonna say a hundred percent, but I'll go seventy-five percent.
Counselor, uh, Baxter.
I'd like to go a hundred percent. They do a lot for the community. They bring in, um, funds fields and. Revenue and they also work with the kids after school, teaching them how to do curling and they even open it up to the high schools.
It's all volunteers.
Yeah.
Counselor Charny?
Well, I, I look at other, um, sports facilities in town that, um. Are, are doing, you know, fitness for, um, everyone in town. Um, and I don't think that we should, um, pick this facility over them and, um. And, and if the, the city is big given close to a hundred and fifty thousand for the roof and they only have a hundred and seventy-nine. So they're not doing much more fundraising for the roof other than what the city is giving them. Um, I'd be willing to go fifty percent.
Counselor Etcher.
Um, I think that was only until last May. I think that the roof was already done and paid for, but.
Um, we, I had to check to them for eighty thousand dollars.
Oh, I remember.
And then when I was on council, we also went at forty-five thousand because the roof was about to cave in.
Yeah, and then they just had the roof done, I think, last year, but. They don't have, when you look at their net income at less than eight thousand, um, they struggle. You know, to operate because it's all volunteers. So I think that they need any help that they can. Plus, if they decided to fold and we had to operate it, what would it cause the city to? Uh, have it staffed and operated as a facility if we had to pay. To a staff member with benefits a lot. I think it's cheaper for us to just give them a hundred percent, like Counselor, um, Baxter.
It's a, uh, profit of interest. Apparently my husband is on the board directors.
So.
There's nothing to share about.
No, Counselor Baxter comment. I just say that. Stricken from the record. Stricken from the record. I, I just think based on the fact that they do a lot of activities, um, I. Was, um, in contact with one of the insurance companies. That was able to give them that donation as well towards the roof. And so I'm very aware of what they have and, um, I've never learned to curl. I've only wanted to do it for thirty years, but. Um, I.
Always do it, Counselor Etcher. Go for it.
Well, there's always an invitation from Mr. Sanders for any of us to go there.
Yeah. I, I, I would be in support of the hundred percent just because they've worked so hard. To, to be able to get the roof done. That if they were to fold and we had to take that on and staff, we would be paying a lot more than eight thousand dollars. So that's why I support it.
Just FYI, uh, they have made a request for capital funds to put in a concrete floor. I don't know how that, if that changes anything, but they have put in a request for us to pay for a concrete floor.
Well, they, they've, they've asked for us to be supportive of it, but they're actually going after the federal. Which I've kind of let them know that we don't have the kind of funds for that right now. So. We don't, so they're well aware of that. That's, we, we're not going to be end up doing that at this point because it's more of a federal. Uh, it, it suggested they point them towards federal and provincial first because. We're, the horse is a little on the skinny side here. So Counselor Ogan.
Yeah, um, I'm just concerned about creating a precedent here. So as, uh, Counselor Charlie mentioned, so there are other organizations providing. Uh, similar activities, you know, for, for, for the community. So, um, I do appreciate what they are doing. And for that, I would be comfortable with fifty percent.
Counselor Charny?
Um, so we are only taxing on the building since we own the land.
Yes.
Correct. Uh, I still say, um, I, I would go with fifty percent, um, basically because. There are other facilities around and if we do, we set a precedent.
Counselor Petrosi?
I'm in agreement with the fifty percent is, uh, there are quite a few more facilities.
Counselor Egan?
I disagree. I think at least seventy-five percent. Like I say, they only had six hundred and forty dollars and whatever kind of wages they paid out last year. Those people are starting to age out themselves. Um, maybe there's not as many curlers as there used to be. But the facility is also used for other things in the summertime. And I just think that it's well worth it. And they, those volunteers keep that place immaculate and I'm not, and it's an expensive building. To keep going. So I really think that you guys should reconsider.
And you're going with what? Seventy-five? Out of your hundred? Or seventy-five? I'm at seventy-five. And the rest of you are at fifty?
To when you say that there's other, um, uh, groups that run facilities. What, what are the expenses like?
And, and well, this is where, and I won't take your thunder away here, CEO, but this is why we have the rec group. Because this is what we're trying to pull into city view. Of why we need to raise taxes for the ball diamonds and soccer fields, the pitches, all this kind of stuff to keep them running. So. And I think that's what you were gonna touch on, uh, or am I wrong?
But it doesn't cost us much.
It all costs us lots of money.
Costs the city, yes. So, but the, but the Curling Club is managing it themselves.
But it's our ice plant. So if the ice plant fails, it is at the cost of the city to replace the ice plant, which is.
Because you use it for the arena as well.
For both, yeah. So if there's a failure, that's, that's a city replacement. Um. Yeah, so ultimately. Every single facility that's on any public land costs money to operate. Um, and costs money. I think we do the, I think we do the landscaping. So there's always operational dollars.
Okay, but I'm still thinking about one single group that basically manages that building.
Yep.
Compared to other single groups in the community that use community facilities. Don't pull out of their pockets, don't raise the funds that these guys do.
So the other one that I think is. Very comparable is the golf course, which is the next conversation.
Yeah.
So we're stymied, so to three at seventy-five, three at fifty. Anybody willing to make a change?
So your worship, just to remind council, we don't have to assign these specific percentages. You are allowed to split the difference. You're allowed to assign them.
I get that.
If you would like, so.
Yeah.
For illustrative purposes to guide the conversation.
I think seventy-five percent is, is a fair, is a fair deal because we are asking. Uh, and unlike Counselor, um, Etcher, others have pointed out, we've already taxed these people that are using this facility already once, so.
Um, I think it's also key to think that about the fact that we're gonna go back. And review these numbers, like council will then be able to see what our totals are. For each, each schedule as well as the grand total. So if you say seventy-five. And you're outside of where you want to be in regards to your spending on permissive tax exemption, this may be one of the ones you want to go back and review.
Counselor Ogan?
So, uh, can you, CEO, can you please remind me if there was a grant in eight approved for this organization?
No, not last year, there was not, no.
Okay, then I will, I will go for the seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five it is then, thank you, Counselor Ogan. It's not a very big building.
Okay, so, uh, Merritt Golf and Country Club, uh, they are a nonprofit. Organization to provide affordable and enjoyable course for the citizens of Merritt. And there is three role numbers associated with the golf course. Uh, fourteen fifty, Juniper Drive. Assessed value, three thirty-two, four hundred. Uh, exemption at a hundred percent is one thousand six thirteen fifty-six. Total revenue, one hundred and nine thousand nine eighty-seven. Total assets, one million twenty-seven, four thirty. The next parcel, the next role number is nineteen ninety Maxwell. Assessed value is, uh, two million four oh seven, three hundred. A fully taxable for that one is seventy-eight thousand one hundred. So that. Is, comes out. Um, permissive at a hundred percent will be eleven thousand nine ninety-one forty-seven. The next property is fourteen fifty, Juniper. Assessed value, three ninety-four. And at a hundred percent, it would be one thousand seventy forty-two. Yeah, it is, but they're different role numbers.
No. No.
To give you a bit of an understanding about what we have and have not given permissive tax for in the last bylaw around the golf club. I want to give you a bit of an understanding about what we have and have not given permissive tax for in the last bylaw around the golf club. There's, this is a complex one.
It is in the sense that this is, some of these are large parcels. We are allowed to exempt the golf course. Uh in the statute. Uh B C assessment does make an determination on what they consider to be for business purposes. So for things like the clubhouse where they may be designed to generate profit. Kitchen, things like that. Um they'll separate those off and there is a fully taxable portion for the golf course. Overall, given the value of the land, the buildings, works out to be like a couple percent that they pay. Uh overall, given that the vast majority of the value is sim planned, but they do separate out a fully taxable portion. Uh for the golf course. And that does bring in some revenue to. The city. So the assessed value of the fully taxable seventy-eight thousand, hundred. Out of a couple million value for them.
Now, the city owns this property, correct?
The city that owns this property is uh it, as it says in the application, it was gifted. I'm not sure that what it was gifted exactly for. Specifically for a golf course. Um but it was gifted by the Collet family. Um they are leasing this land for a dollar a year.
So um what do we call that when that's a? Gifted land like that. Endowment. So are call it still the endowment owners of this or is the city the owners of the endowment? Cool. So the endowment no longer exists. Okay, thank you. Because. If it was still endowed, if it failed, then it would go back into the Collet family. So kind of like the rodeo grounds was in the beginning as well. Okay, thank you. Now, can somebody explain to me how this is when there's green fees, cart fees? A restaurant and everything. How is this a nonprofit? I'm a little confused. This is where I draw some confusion on nonprofit.
So this would be, as an example, a members-only club like Sagebrush would be a members-only club where they only have specific times when the public can golf.
Okay.
And they probably charge crazy rates that most of us can't afford. The idea is, no, they don't. Okay. Um it seems like they should. Uh but this course ultimately, the intention of a public course is not to make money.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, I was just wondering.
And to be open to the public as a, not a members-only situation.
Counsel Egan?
Okay, what I wanted to explain here, to the best of my understanding, is that um they leased the. Membership, not the memberships, the mem- the members pay membership and it stays with the actual membership club. However, they've leased the building sort of to Sydney, the club pro. Who runs the kitchen. He hires people to sell the green fees. And as far as I know, he got all the green fees, all the cart fees. He has the pro shop. He he got all the money from all of that. He still has a.
So um there is some interesting, that is kind of a question that has come up from our community services department. In regards to um the different, the difference between what money the golf club make, like the golf clubhouse makes. Versus what the uh the club makes.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Counsel Rogan? So just for clarification, Counsel Egan, Egan. So the city leased the property to the club for one dollar. And the club is leasing the facility to somebody else for. For a specific amount of money, which we don't know.
So do we want to red flag this one for more information?
I would think so. Because I mean, there's lots of rumors flying around. I think I meant from two before.
So let's red flag this one and get some more information out of it if we can uh.
Two is that if the city owns the land, these lots on Juniper, the fourteen fifty that were named twice. Wouldn't that we we'd have to give them a hundred percent so that they wouldn't get taxed because of city land?
So they can, they can apply under the lease. It's probably similar to the um. You don't have to grant it.
Right.
So as part of the lease, they are responsible for paying the tax because it's a different rule number. And as they may apply for ta- tax exemption, but you do not have to grant tax exemption.
Okay, and is that what we've done on the other one where we gave a hundred percent so it would come up, wouldn't come up as zero?
Yeah, so.
Town hall, gave it a hundred percent exemption so they would not get any tax bill from us.
So could I, I just have clarification?
Sure.
Maxwell is the actual golf course. Just.
Yep.
Well, Maxwell is assessed at two million dollars.
Be the parking lot and the building.
And then the golf course is the two Juniper, the actual golf course itself, the two Junipers.
Well, the golf, the one Juniper is the, the driving range that uh is behind the fire department. Know that little strip that supposed to be the driving range?
Yes.
That's one of, I think that's one of the Junipers. That should be the last one. Yeah.
So we'll bring this more information to you about this tomorrow evening because ultimately you have two questions for us. Based on um all of this is the um. The legal opinion.
Mm-hmm.
For. The business that uses the city hall as a storefront. And some more information about the golf course.
And if we could, on the golf course, if we could get like a map that shows us, that highlight what we're talking about.
Yes, we'll get.
Yeah.
G I S to do that tomorrow.
Appreciate that. Yeah, we, we.
Okay. Okay, so uh so um. CFO has asked uh that we're not gonna have a legal opinion. We could probably get you a lot about the golf course, but we're not gonna get your legal opinion by tomorrow.
Um the only illegal opinion we want is on the rodeo. Association.
Oh, the rodeo association.
Yeah, because.
Oh, right, because, right, okay, not the.
That's the only one we would like some, because I mean, the CFO put something forward, but you made it clear that he is not a lawyer. So that's why we're asking for a little bit more clarity on the rodeo.
So I think if you would like right now to kind of see where we are, can, we'll send out to you tomorrow. Because you probably can't do it right now.
No, there's no reason to do it right now.
Few things we'll send you tomorrow is the um. Is sort of the summary of the amounts that you've currently approved. Uh for each property as well as a summation of that. Um we will try and get some of this golf cu- club stuff done and we'll get a sent in. A question to legal, uh probably the quick legal people. Uh that will get that done. Probably won't get that right away. Uh do we want any kind of? Recommendation to go to council on this for the next council meeting?
No, yeah.
We have to do it by the end of October, just, just to be clear. It has to be approved. So it has to be approved by the end of October, which means you have to do all three readings. And adoption before the end of October. So you have one meeting now uh in September and two meetings on October. So you have to, in those three meetings, we have to complete the process before it goes to these, uh to um the province. So you're tired.
As long as we get it done, Counsel Egan?
Yeah, sorry, there was something you were gonna bring us back on the opinion of setting a precedent for counseling.
No, I think, I think you got, I think we decided that was okay. It was the line item. It's not really a line item for the.
Sponsorship.
For the sponsorship. But I want to make sure that if we're not doing things, something outside of the spirit of the bylaw.
Good.
For the rodeo.
Okay. That's all, folks.
No, we'll send you stuff email.
Tomorrow at six?
No, do not need to meet tomorrow at six. You got through it.
Okay, no, so, so you.
Bring you, we'll bring you, everything, we'll bring you, everything is a briefing note to then, we'll answer your questions. We'll bring you everything as a briefing note to um the next council meeting.
So then we'll discuss these ones and we can kind of.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, if we bring you everything to the next council meeting, we should have enough time to move this forward.
Okay.
No, no, you're good. Okay, well, well.
Hold on a sec, hold on a sec.
Uh CFO is just suggesting that uh for the golf course or any other ones where you have more individual questions, that maybe we can't answer all the questions. Um. Who, so for the golf course, we want the pro and somebody from the club to attend. Who would you like? He could attend by Zoom. Or do you want him?
For myself. Um I I think we just need to know the legal layout of these three properties. I don't think we need the person who's leasing it to help us along.
Yeah.
That's our job to do, right?
Yeah.
That's not gonna sway me one way or the other. Because it's, it's what's best for the community and what best, somebody who's actually making a profit off of it really should have no input into this as far as I'm concerned. Uh but that's just me. I mean, council may see it a different way. I think we can do it on our own. Hold up, hold up. Uh any other questions on this? Thank you, Linda. Appreciate it. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, staff, everyone. Uh, Jared?